Louisiana, do you fly? Just a couple of quick announcements. Uh, we have coffee, coffee, hot chocolate, the back corner, and any donations, uh, support the friends in the library. Lunch tickets are available in the entryway as the meeting starts, they'll, they'll move inside. It's ten dollars for adults, five dollars for children on the twelve. And save your tickets for the pie raffle, we all know how important that is. Um, the lunch fundraiser is for the town director department and the friends, uh, of front of the Tombridge Library. And you also, this year, may purchase a meal to go, so if you're interested in purchasing a meal to go, that's good. Uh, at the end of the meeting, you have leftover pies for sale at the pie table, and they go cheap. Can everybody hear me okay? Pretty good? No? Quiet, louder? Just yell at the microphone? Okay. So we'll start the meeting. To start the meeting by go- reading the warning. The voters of the town of Tunbridge are hereby notified and warned to meet at the Tunbridge Central School on the fourth day of March, twenty twenty-five, at ten AM to conduct the following business. Article one, to elect a moderator for the ensuing year. Article two, to hear the reports of town officers, collectors of delinquent taxes, auditors, library, listers, cemetery commission, planning commission, recreation, select board, treasurer, and trustees of public funds. Article three, shall the voters authorize payment of real and personal property taxes on Monday, November fourth, two, twenty twenty-five, by delivery to town offices, quote, postmarked on a, on, I can read, I promise, on or before that date, with delinquent taxes having an interest rate or interest charge of one percent per month or fraction thereof for the first three months, and one and a half percent each month pursuant to thirty-two VSA Section five, one, three, six, to thereafter, and an eight percent penalty charged against them for the due date. Article four, shall the voters authorize the town treasurer pursuant to thirty-two VSA Section four, seven, nine, one, to collect current tax, taxes. Article five, shall the voters authorize general fund expenditures for operating expenses of eight hundred sixty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars, of which five hundred seventeen thousand, nine hundred and forty-six thousand dollars shall be raised by taxes. Article six, shall the voters, voters authorize highway fund expenditures of one million, two hundred and eighty-seven, nine hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, of which one million, one hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars shall be raised by taxes. Article seven, shall the town vote to appropriate fifty-four thousand, five hundred dollars to support the vol- the Tunbridge Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated? Article eight, shall the town appropriate eighteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty, fifty-two cents to support the following social services pursuant to, uh, twenty-four BSC, uh, two, six, nine, one? And if it's, if there's no objections, I'm not going to read the list of organizations and the money that they want. Any objections to that? Article nine, shall the town vote to eliminate the offices of first and second constable? Article ten, to elect all town officers as required by law, a select board, or select board member for a term of three years, a lister for a term of three years, an auditor for a term of three years, cemetery commission for a term of three years, trustee of public funds for a term of three years, library trustee for a term of three years, library trustee for a term of three years, library trustee for a term of one year, collector of delinquent taxes for a term of one year, first constable for a term of one year, second constable for a term of one year, second grand juror for a term of one year. Article eleven, shall the voters authorize the town treasurer to establish a library capital fund? Article twelve, shall the voters authorize the allocation of surplus funds from the library's previous year's operating budget to the library capital fund? And then article thirteen, other business. So we'll start with article one, to elect a moderator for the ensuing year, and I will defer to our town clerk. Yeah, she's coming up here.
Okay. I would like to open the floor for nominations for moderator. All right, we have Izzy, do we have a second? And anybody else? Okay, so that moves Izzy, you're the moderator.
Tough job, somebody's gotta do it. Um, couple, couple of opening remarks, a couple of things to go over. Uh, some of you know I'm a, I'm a town meeting purist, and if you thought I wasn't gonna talk about how great town meeting is to begin with, you're wrong, I'm going to. Um, we're practicing the essence of pure democracy. It's face to face with people you see, we're neighbors. We have the ability to discuss, resolve, amend, which is, and convince our neighbors. Um, and of course, us, you may or may not know this, but this is one of the only places in the entire world where pure democracy is practiced. And I think that's something to be said, and that's the state of Vermont, and Tunbridge is one of the last towns, one of the last towns in city practice. And of course, town meeting only happens because you show up and you decide to participate in it, and that's hugely important. Uh, and of course, the real reason we're all here is for the pie. Um, I, uh, I guess two aspects of my personality are humor and history, um, sometimes overlap. So I just thought I'd take a second, if that's okay, to just read a couple of Frank Bryan, if you don't know who Frank Bryan is, he's a Vermont political science professor, and he's a humorist. And in his book, Out of Order, nineteen ninety-one, he, he gave these suggestions on how to read the budget. So I thought maybe some of you enjoy this. The first one is to look at the bottom line under expenses, comparing this year's totals to last year's. Swear, then go back through the budget, line by line, and find out what, what, uh, where the increases were. Circle them in red for town meetings for the next confrontation. Two, turn to the tax page, no matter what the numbers say, observe to yourself that taxes keep going up and will never stop. Three, a general rule, read all the numbers in the town report before you read the words. Numbers tell you what you want to know, words are just excuses. Finally, find out how much it costs to print the town report, then make a list of every top, uh, typographical era in the report, and swear that if you were a selectman, you could find a new printer. So hopefully. And then today, cause I'm a big history guy, today actually marks the two-hundred-and-thirty-fourth anniversary of Vermont joining the Union. So we, of course, were the, the first state outside of the original thirteen to join the Union. So I've done my, my rant a little bit from now. Um, couple of things, I've made reference sheets, they're out for your voter registration. If you wanted to grab one of those, those kind of go through the process, just so that you have a better understanding. Um, we will break at lunch, we'll see how the meeting goes, but we will take a break around noon. Uh, the warning, obviously, can be found on page four of your, of your town report. Uh, we will be using Robert's Rules of Order, and so, of course, the purpose of Robert's Rules of Order is to ensure that we have an orderly meeting, where everybody has a chance to speak. And basically, Robert's Rules is the basic rules, except for where Vermont state law takes precedent, and there are some places where that happens. Um, the body can change, can, can change Robert's Rules, and you can do that through, through a, suspend the rules, and you can do that through a two-thirds majority. You cannot change Vermont state law. So we can, in theory, change Robert's Rules of Order. Only legal voters of the town of Tunbridge can vote and or speak. If you're a legal voter, you should have a white index card that signifies to us that you are legitimate. Not that, and of course, obviously, in the state of Vermont, you can same-day register. Um, everything, uh, which makes our meeting special, everything is done from the floor. Um, and everything needs to be moved and seconded. And for some of you, it's really annoying, cause I'm gonna restate the article multiple times. The reason why I do that is to ensure that you know what you're voting for. And that's per Robert's Rules, it's not just cause I like to hear myself talk. Um, I will, if you are, if you move, if you made the motion, you had the first right to speak. I will do my best to recognize people in the order that they raise their hands. And you can only speak twice in a debate on an article, and that is for ten minutes. Robert's calls for ten minutes, but there are no objections, I would like to make that, limit that to five minutes. First speed. Seeing no objections. Um, while we normally use microphones, that seems like that's gonna be a terrible idea. Um, you may just have to be very vocal and or come up to the stage. Um, please direct your comments towards me. The other thing too is in speaking, I will try to ensure that everybody else has a chance to speak before you can speak again. If that makes sense, and of course, of course, that gives off of everybody the opportunity to speak. Um, everything's done by voice vote. You can call division, and what that means is if you, that is, you can interrupt that, and what that means is division is a standing, a standing count. So if you feel as though, sometimes people say yea or nay a lot louder, and you feel as though that's not very accurate, you can call division, and that's a standing vote that will be counted by the town clerk. The other thing is if you want to, a paper ballot, seven may stand for a paper ballot. So if you want to, sometimes something may be controversial, you can ask for a paper ballot as long as, um, seven people stand. I will use, as much as I can, unanimous consent, which is, if there are no objections, it's the great trump card of Robert's Rules. Um, articles can be amended, so you can amend articles to change, that's the beauty, John has talked about this, and Gary's talked about this, that you can change uh, the numbers if you want, which in part is the math, but that is the beauty of of town meeting, is that if you look at a number and you're like, I don't think we should give this person this much for this organization, or I think we should give them more or less, you can do that. Uh, you can also call the question, and calling the question is the way to end the debate. So you have to be recognized by me, it has to be seconded, and it needs a two-thirds majority. And what that means is that we stop talking. So if you're the person after the person who calls the question, that's the way it is. Um, in terms of, uh, you can reconsider a motion, but a motion can be only, for an article, it can only be reconsidered if we haven't started another article, and if you are on the prevailing side. So whether that's a yes or a no, that's the only way it can be considered. Uh, nothing and other business can be voted for. So it needs to be germane, oh, I should talk about that too. Amendments need to be germane, and what that means is relevant. So if you decide to take the fire truck and make a motion, or make an amendment to change it to the greater, that is not germane. Um, just, and, and I, I will walk you through that. Uh, nominations, uh, if you are nominated for a position, you can decline, you're allowed to do that. If there are no objections, we'll also, if the nominee would like to talk a little bit about themselves. Uh, ultimately, my job is to facilitate the business and the will of the body, and to do so in an orderly manner. Um, that's basically, if you don't understand what is happening, ask a question. If you think what is happening is wrong, you are allowed to challenge. Okay, so you can challenge me, and we can talk about that. Um, and basically, if you need help facilitating your motion, I'm here to try that. I am not suggesting, by the way, this bad boy is seven hundred and fourteen pages, if you think that I got this memorized, you're out of your mind. Um, so you can challenge the, the, uh, moderator by saying point of order. So what I encourage you to do is listen actively, speak respectfully, and appreciate you, appreciate your neighbors. So without further ado, we'll get this party started. Article one, to hear the reports of town officers, collector of delin- delinquent taxes, uh, taxes, auditors, library, listers, cemetery commission, planning commission, recreation, select board, treasurer, and trustees of public funds. If there are no objections, the conservation commission would also like to share your court. Seeing no objections? We will start with town offices. You want? You want? Yeah.
I guess first question.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, so collector of liquid taxes.
Thanks, Izzy. Hello, everybody, Joe Paquin, collector of taxes, up on Potash. Uh, my report is on page thirty-six. Um, just to give you guys an update from this last year, um, we did hold, hold a tax sale in March of last year. Uh, one of the properties that has been historically delinquent, the Christian NRG Mission, um, sold, and they did not redeem. So that property is being transferred to the new owner. Um, and one property that has been historically delinquent did not sell a tax sale. Uh, and that one, it is the Lockyer property up on Dickman, sorry, thanks Dickman Hill. Um, so that property will go back up for tax sale again this year. Um, most of the delinquent taxes from twenty twenty-two to twenty eighteen are two properties, which is Lockyer and Stavasky, um, which will go up. Um, they'll, you'll note the, uh, a little blurb in the bottom. Act one oh six was passed by the legislature, which modifies Title Thirty-two, and how we can collect delinquent taxes. Uh, properties must be delinquent for a minimum of one year before we can start tax sale proceeding. So you can see on the little, um, addendum I have, that's up on the paper, uh, table over there, the entire, uh, right side for you is properties that cannot be sent to tax sale, um, whether they have a payment agreement or not. Uh, we have to wait until that full year, after that year, we can start proceedings, which includes posting the property um, and other notification methods. Uh, so we have seven properties that are eligible for tax sale this year, uh, which will, will start those proceedings shortly. Any questions? Oh, yeah.
We, you're putting, uh, Rocky Lockyer's property up on Dickman, if it doesn't sell this side, or ask the people, don't it, so you hope you find someone, or if you buy that contagion, try to sell it into town on the market?
Yeah, there is, uh, multiple methods, uh, one of them is actually the town would buy it, um, and wait for it not to be redeemed, and then the town would basically write off those taxes, and then the town would take the liability of cleaning up the property and selling it, knowing that they may take a loss on it. So I think that's just kind of up for debate on whether we, uh, implore the select board to do that or not. Um, I can ask them, but, uh, you know, I, I don't know if it's best fiscal sense, um, for that.
It's law, you want it?
For that property, yeah. Um, I was trying, thank you for saying it eloquently, but I couldn't. Um, uh, so it's, it's something that hopefully somebody will buy, uh, this year, but we may look at maybe writing off some of the taxes from some of those prior years to make it a little bit more, you know, likely that'll sell, you know, if it's only got five thousand dollars in delinquent taxes instead of thirty thousand, somebody might be like, I could clean it up for twenty thousand dollars and still make a profit, so.
Doesn't sell this year, would you wish to do a cash offer on?
Uh, we cannot do that, we have to, we have to do, uh, by the process in Title Thirty-two, unfortunately. Thank you. Another question? All right, give it back to, oh, sorry, go ahead. So, um, the names are on the report that I bring here to town meeting. Um, one of the reasons why is there are several times that a property's delinquent taxes are not the fault of the taxpayer, where it's actually the fault of their mortgage company not paying. So we try to give them a little bit of a leeway before their neighbors are costing them about their delinquent taxes, and that's why I provide them at town meeting, cause that gives us that time for those mortgages, uh, to pay the, the taxes on time, so. Any other questions? All right, all right, Izzy. Auditors.
Good morning, I'm Betsy Race, I live in West Tunbridge on Dugout Road. And he said auditors, there are three of us. One of them is ill, and the other one just had too many meetings and couldn't be here today. Linda Hoyt and Inessa Morrison are your other auditors. Um, first of all, some of you may have noticed that the select board report in this year's town report is actually last year's select board report. And we actually have John, this new select board report, we have copies on the back table, and we'll try and get them around before they have their report. Um, in the auditor's report, we put that we're done a full audit of fiscal year twenty-four, and we did finally get a draft, and it's, I say finally, it takes a long time, but, um, there were no significant, um, discrepancies or inconsistencies, as they call them. And the one that, that is, uh, we've got to work on is building a manual that explains all the financial process and who's responsible for what in the town of Tunbridge. Um, the other thing I wanted to share is in the town report, some of you have noticed that there's some questions in little trucks and signs and things like that through the report. And on the inside of the front cover, we tried to explain that. There will be prizes for people who can answer the question correctly, and we're gonna do that at noon. While people are having lunch, we'll just ask who's, can answer, we'll say the question, and whoever has the correct answer will get a prize. And we're doing gift cards to the two stores in town. That's all I had, are there any questions? Yes.
I see the question is two, seven, six, five, seven, two, with the forty thousand of the papers. So that means the tax rate, the total tax bill, zero point nine eight two one, instead of zero point nine one two.
Only, only can go look and see what we had, the documents that we were looking at at the time.
On page six, says five hundred and two thousand, forty-five should be raised by now. So I think you just missed out on putting the extra four pounds.
No, there was a reason it was out, and to tell you the truth, I can't tell you right now without going and looking at our notes. Okay, thank you.
You, library?
Hi, um, I'm Mariah Lawrence, the librarian, for those of you who don't know me. Um, but I hope most of you have been into libraries here, most of you have, which is awesome. It's always my, my goal, like, I always wanna make a new year's resolution, that everybody in Tunbridge comes to the library one year, it would be so cool. Um, but this year was amazing, you can see by my report, we've, we've done so much at the library. Um, and I also have a prize, uh, situation in my report too, which is so funny. So if you like wicked, you can look through the report and see if you can find ten, uh, wicked themed words in there. Um, but this year, I think the most important thing to highlight is what an amazing team we have at the library, um, between Maureen and Teresa and Russell. It's like just such a magical space, and they have so much to offer the community, and just like, we all fill different spaces in the library. So it's been, it's been really fun to work with them. Um, we're finishing up one of the largest grants I've ever been a part of, the Libraries Transforming Communities Grant, um, which makes the library more accessible for people who are neurodivergent, um, which in turn makes the library a better space for all of us. Um, we're creating new quiet spaces and add a ton of mindfulness programs, and it's been really, really a wonderful experience. Um, I think it, it finishes up at the end of March, and so that's been pretty cool. Um, we have the dog art show coming up, so if you have a dog you love, uh, make sure to bring some art, like, whether it's a painting, or a drawing, or a photograph, or a column, bring it down to the library, we're displaying all the dogs, and it's in, uh, reference to Gather, which is this year's Vermont Humanities Book Pit. Um, if you haven't had a chance to read that, I definitely recommend it. Um, trying not to talk too much here. Um, I wanted to just do a quick shout-out to the volunteers that come to the library, I can't name them all, because there's so many, and I don't wanna forget anybody, but there, there are so many people that come to the library and volunteer their time. Um, one individual, especially I'm thinking of, is, um, no longer with us, and that's Jim Ludwig. And I really wanted to say something today about him. When I first got this job, he saw me outside watering the, the gardens, and he immediately made me stop, and took over the watering, and, you know, every week he would come in, he came and mulched the garden, and then when he noticed that I was doing a lot with the trash, he took right over with that, and, um, just never complained, and never even asked for anything, just always did it, and he's very misty at the library, and, um, I think that's kind of one of the best things about the library is that everybody has a space there, and so if you have an idea, or if you have, you know, a desire to volunteer, there's, there's a space for everybody, and we may get a better place when we all come together, so. Um, if you guys have any questions about the program or anything that's going on at the library, this is, this is cool.
Uh, articles eleven and twelve are linked to the library.
Yes.
And I know that I could save this question for when it comes to time for the budget.
Yeah.
For the general budget.
Um.
But it's incorporated into that, and, and if the, my, my initial reaction was, well, actually, since if there was natural funding was not getting expensive for this year, uh, is there a reason for putting that into the capital fund, or is putting it into the best one, or is this year's budget for the, for the library?
Yeah, um, I think that Laura is gonna be the best one, our treasurer, to answer that question, she came prepared with that one, cause of course, we anticipated that question, it's a good, a good questioning, Rob.
So could you just rephrase the question, Rob? Um, what?
Well, okay, my reaction is that there was, uh, natural funding in the previous year's operating expenses.
Yeah.
Uh, it looks like the one request is to put that money into a capital fund.
Right.
So what with the capital fund before, and, uh, and also why not just do it to the general budget for the, the library given for appropriated funds last year?
Yeah. So, so the, um, the library, as a result of past few years, has a balance surplus left over from the operating budget. In part, um, it's due to success with grant funding. Um, but we obviously can't move grant funding into a capital fund, because that's might be received one year but spent the following year, which results in a surplus, but the surplus from the operating budget is roughly a hundred thousand dollars, if Becky's here, she can confirm that, the treasurer of the town. Um, the, the idea of establishing a capital fund is really to address things like improvements to the library internally, inside the library. Might be renovating a room, might be having to replace a boiler, and those things tend to be capital-like items, and are not an annual operating item. So the idea would be separate, establish this capital fund, so that if there is an emergency, or we do wish to renovate a room or do something, we can do that from the capital fund, and it doesn't, doesn't cloud the picture of the annual operating fund. It's a separate capital item. And, yeah, it would be, you know, disclosed, reported on, what we use that mon- money for. Um, so that's really the intention. The intention is not to run a surplus every year. We, we wish to draw from the town, um, an allocation, as you know, it's remained flat the last couple of years at eighty thousand dollars. Um, in fact, that amount that comes from the town is, uh, slightly below what most municipalities in Vermont fund their towns on a percentage basis of their budget. So ours runs around seventy-six percent. Um, most municipalities are allocating about eighty percent. Uh, nationally, I think that number is over eighty percent. So the good news is, is we're doing so much at the library, um, and we're not drawing as much as, you know, many other municipalities are from, many other libraries are from their town, city budgets. Um, so it just, it just seemed to us to make good prudent sense to set, set aside this money for a capital fund, uh, and to be very transparent, but what would we intend to do with that? Any other questions? Yep.
Is there anything you perceive coming up, like, is it okay, is like, is there any structural happening in the building that we think like, this is coming up in the next year or two?
Uh, we, we're not certain about the roof, um, but I, I will say that the, we do need to address some fireproofing in the basement. Um, and, yeah, Mariah.
Um, and the, the buildings definitely need to be painted, and then, um, it's a lot of the window frames, which is always a fun thing, since the town owns the outside, and we own the inside, to figure out the window situation. Uh, the doors need to be replaced, there's some, like, hornets I've been dealing with. Um, but ultimately, I think one of the, sort of, the upstairs, yeah, is like a little bit of a dream. I did write a rant, but I did not receive to, um, renovate the upstairs of the library, because it's a beautiful space, if you ever wanna check it out, it's really cool, and it could be, um, a big improvement to the building itself. But I think that, like, we know, as what we know of, definitely the windows and the, and the painting are, are the, like, the top things that need to be done to the building itself. Any other questions? Those are the first two questions I've ever had in the five years that I've been. Any other questions? Those are the first two questions I've ever had in the five years that I've been. So I'm really happy. Yeah. Yeah, so I learned so much about all of this. I'm still learning a lot. But apparently second floor is, that's okay for egress, like you don't need to have a fire escape. And the thing that prevented me from getting the grant was that you, they wanted, while it's not like it wasn't valid that it had to have a lift for, to be ADA compliant. They wanted it to have a lift to fund this project, which was, it's, it's, that's like a hundred thousand dollars just for the lift. And it would take up a giant amount of space. So I wanted to have the chair that brings you up, but they didn't want to fund a project with the, with the chair that could bring you upstairs. But the egress is apparently fine. I walked with the fire marshal and learned about that. And I spoke with the architect that did the original renovation of that building. That's as far as I know. I'm no expert. Any other questions? Thank you.
Just a quick thing too, when you stand up, please stand up when you speak and obviously your microphone down. Please state your name and what road you live on too, please. It's very important to them. Listers.
Dan, Rudy, and I'm the chair of the board of listeners. Our report is on page thirty-four. The primary things I just want to touch on quickly and give an update on. We are one of roughly more than sixty percent of towns in the state. They're mandated to do a townwide reappraisal at this point. Due to that volume of that, there is a bit of a pinch in terms of scheduling. Our most recent update after issuing our requests for proposals. I believe we're probably looking at twenty thirty. Things have just started to roll into twenty thirty per scheduled. That would, the process would likely start in twenty twenty-eight. But I think we're looking at that kind of a window. We have not done a townwide reappraisal since two thousand and ten. Going forward, it is highly likely that property valuation will view the state tax agency will be requiring towns to do things on more like a six-year window. Our trigger this past year, the statutes change, so our common level of appraisal, which is an equalization between towns on the fair market value, is no longer the guiding factor for a mandated reappraisal. What is, is what's called the coefficient of dispersion. And that's more of a measure of equity within the town. And there is a twenty percent threshold on that. We are currently at twenty-one point oh four percent. So that is why we are mandated to do a townwide reappraisal. Our sales in the last three or four years, it always looks at a three-year window. As happened the last time, there was a one-up in property values after the two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine housing prices. We lagged behind the window a little bit. We mostly saw our high-end properties start to come in. It often doubled what the town had been assessed at. That has now kind of moved across the board with the sales we have seen in the last couple of years. It's things are just selling for twice what we have been assessed at. So we're doing, and that process will be happening over the next number of years. The other thing I want to point out is that the common level of appraisal, that equalization factor between towns is mostly due to the education funding system. And it's meant to equalize taxes between the towns in regards to fair market value. Our CLA has fallen to sixty-five percent now. So what we have things listed at is significantly below what things are selling at. And that is the adjustment that goes on. Because we are below a hundred percent, when we get our tax rate, our education tax rate, it gets divided by that number. So if we are below a hundred percent, our effective tax rate goes up. So in fact, last year, our budget, education budget was not an increase or not much of an increase. But because our CLA had fallen so significantly, when it gets divided by that number, our effective tax rate goes up. At sixty-five percent, that would be a really huge jump. So one of the things that's going to happen this year is that they are looking at a common level of appraisal across the state. And that's somewhere around eighty, I forget, it's in the eighty percent. Our CLA will get divided by that so that the hit is not as hard for towns that are significantly below that hundred percent. So if we divide that sixty-five percent by the eighty percent, you're going to end up with something a good bit higher than, than the sixty-five percent. Hopefully that makes sense. If it doesn't, I'm happy to talk about that later with anybody if you have more questions about it. But I did want to call that to your attention, but that will be a change this year that should soften the blow of the fact that our CLA is now down to sixty-five percent. Any other questions?
Cemetery commission.
Max, the daughter. Um, first thing I want to say to all the people that made the committee for the God's three year month. Um, Matt, that's the library, Tom Griffin, who is there to talk after the Nurburgring Old Cemetery. And August, December twenty-five, uh, mark all charities to come help with rest, rest raising where it's on the Hudson Town Cemetery. The Hudson Town Cemetery is on the highway. And I see there, now the which fell off, turned up and three. And all the statues.
Any questions for Baxter? Alright, thanks Baxter. Conservation commission.
The conservation commission, Eliza Minucci, I live on Kelsey Mountain Road. Um, the conservation commission report is on page forty-nine. But I only had two short things I wanted to say to you. One is that we are seeking more membership on our commission. You can have up to nine members. We would love to have two or three more join us. We meet the first Thursday of the month at sixteen-ham at the library. Uh, so we'd love to see you there. The second thing that I wanted to talk about was that you have in the building today, a official Guinness Book of World Records plaque for Vermont's efforts in Greenup Day last year. And yeah. And so you can stop by and take a selfie. I don't know if you've ever been this close to an official Guinness Book of World Records certificate. And I just wanted to point out, Tunbridge, how exceptional you are. That we participated at a rate of twenty-one percent of our population pledging to pick up trash. The state participated at one percent. So if the state had participated like Tunbridge did, there wouldn't have been six thousand eight hundred pledges. There would have been one hundred and thirty-six thousand pledges. So Tunbridge is exceptional, especially at picking up trash. Greenup Day this year is on May third and we can just keep doing it like we do in Tunbridge. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Well, any questions? Kiki can't talk back, can he? Planning commission.
Rudy, again, and Amy Frost, our chair is not able to be here today. So the planning commission report, I think, is on page thirty-six. We, we're looking a lot at floodplain issues in particular this year, the changes in our extreme weather patterns have taken a toll. Our floodplain maps are currently being updated. The U S Geological Survey and FEMA are looking on updating our maps. Our maps date back to the nineteen eighties, nineteen eighty-five. And nineteen ninety-one is our official map that Soil Conservation Service did for us in nineteen ninety-one for our flood hazard ordinance. Due to that, we expect to see blue maps for review coming out probably in the next year. We actually expected to see them already, but hopefully we will see them in the next year and get a chance to review those drafts. We will make public notice of when those are in and able to be reviewed. And we will be updating our floodplain hazard ordinance to correspond with that process, adopting those, those newer maps. They will make use of LIDAR like image detection and ranging, which can give us one-foot contours instead of the old maps that have twenty-foot contours. Uh, we should have much more accurate maps and be able to account for how water is actually often moving through our land state. The other thing is that we have been working on some of the post-flood remediation efforts. And in particular, about a building resilient infrastructure in communities grant that helped us look at our transportation corridors in an emergency situation. In particular, the select board has helped review the recommendations from VHB, the consulting firm that helped us prioritize projects that will hopefully help us address issues in particularly a flood situation. But in any emergency situation that will address some of our transportation corridors and increase our resilience and safety. Any other questions?
I don't know if this is a business, somebody does that part of the building. I don't know if this is a business, but I'm wondering what's happening with the survey with sidewalks in town? Is there anyone going to give a report on that?
Yeah, there is some information in the town report on page thirty-six about. VHB was also the consulting firm that did that and highlighted a couple of, a few possible recommendations. There has been no decision made on those particular recommendations. The primary thing that became very obvious is the speed of traffic through town. I know that the sheriff's department has increased their presence in town, which I think is going to help. And I think we are also looking at some sort of sounds similar to surrounding towns. Hope that did.
Thanks Rudy, recreation.
Uh, Kathy Gluso, Ward Health, Tunbridge, Utah. Recreation is doing the same as we always do. We are supporting the baseball and softball in the town between the school and the Cal Ripken. We have the ice cream counter that was still going strong. I think I saw posted, there was a hundred people out there in one day. So that's still going strong. There's still lots of tournaments that go on, the Last Breakfast that we just had two days ago. I think we had over a hundred and forty people there. So any questions? And I want to thank all the people that volunteered, that aren't on the recreation, that just come out and help us. I'm pretty amazed at how many people show up and just help us out. Any questions?
Basically, a lot of the runners, you know, conversations around that, based on Catherine's reasons to be closed. As we, well, town hall or runner, one of the runners, so the other generation.
Involved in that, yes.
I have this, uh, I have this one here, I also, you know, I've used it a little bit, but is there a plan to help renovate the playgrounds there?
Yes, there is. And that's not that old a playground. I mean, if you, if you remember, all the people here remember it's a playground that was there before. It's, we're going to try to get a new one, but they're, the pricing there are really expensive. So we're, we've been looking into it and we need to connect a little bit more. Anybody else?
Select board.
Right, select board report. For those of you who don't know, I'm John O'Brien. I live on Moody Road, so east Tunbridge. Next to me is Mike McBeaches, who is on Black Tussin Mountain Road, west Tunbridge. And Karen Moran, our chair, is on Monarch Hill, central Tunbridge, and lives in the village that really center. Unfortunately, this year's cycle report, in a cut and paste mistake, did not make it in. So if you had a groundhog feeling that like, like this seems just like last year, that was last year's report. The manual report. And in another Groundhog Day episode, our treasurer woke in here last year and she swore she'd never miss another town meeting. Well, she woke up this morning with an awful stomach bug, so she's not here again. So we'll try to get through this, but she knows a lot about all these numbers in there. So we'll try to answer it the best we can. So I don't know if everybody got that handout with the cycle report on it, but we can just go through that. And there were just a few things, like for, for somebody who are new to the annual report. We're living right now, spending money in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, which runs to June thirtieth. So the money we voted at last year's town meeting, that's the budget we're working with right now. What we're going to vote on is the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, sometimes just called fiscal year twenty-six. Uh, but it's, it's for the fiscal year that runs from July first to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. And the way we do it is we just estimate what things are going to cost from July first to June thirtieth in the upcoming year. So once again, like Izzy said, this is, these are estimates, it's a budget. If you think, well, we're way off, things are going to cost a lot more than that, or they're going to cost a lot less, you're, you're free to amend our budget. First, I like to go, Rudy already mentioned it, but we, when, when the art money came to us, we, there was a lot of money from federal government, some from the state that flowed through to us. And what was it, about four hundred thousand? So we had some, some select board meetings open to everybody. We listened to everybody about how we should spend that money. We committed all that money. And now Mary Ann Taran, who's our grants manager, who was paid for somewhat out of that money, has managed to get something called a MERC grant, which covers, it's going to cover some weatherization in our town hall, in our town offices, which we have, we were planning. in our town hall, in our town offices, which we have, we were planning to use the ARPA money for. So now we may have some grant money left over, and in the, hopefully in the next few months, we'll try to figure out how to use that money for other, other worthy projects. On the, on the report, the proposed general fund budget to be raised by taxes is up by fifteen thousand two hundred and one dollars, which is a three percent increase in the amount to be raised by taxes. The proposed general fund budget is up by seventy-three thousand six hundred and fifty-one, which is a nine-point-two percent increase in the total budget. And just to add, the federal COLA, which is the cost of living adjustment, is two-point-five percent. Inflation on January first was at two-point-seven, raises for non-highway employees are at five percent. So the way it works is there's a general fund, if you look to the annual report, that covers sort of all the administrative side of things. And then there's the highway fund, which is all the things that have to do with roads, and we sort of split those into two. So not unlike, at the state level, you know, our taxes go off mostly to education, but then they also go, property taxes go to run the town. And then at the town level, it gets broken up into general fund and the highway fund. So if you go to your, your annual report, the general fund, all those figures start on page nine. Highway starts on fifteen. And the amazing thing in our annual report is the transparency, like, starting on twenty-three. Pretty much every dollar this town spends, we, we track it and we put it in this book. So you can find out how much employees in town make. You can look and say, oh, how much, how much are we paying on South River Open Rescue or on Royal Auto? You know, you can go there and see exactly how much we spent last year. And these are the numbers we go by, too, and we try to estimate what in the upcoming fiscal year we're going to spend. So that's the general fund, and our chair is going to do the highway fund.
Thank you, John. You've done such a great job. I don't want to talk that at all. But, trucks, yeah. Well, speaking of that, it takes a year and a half or two, or two and a half, or whatever, to get a new truck now after we order it. So I think in June, we're going to replace the four-wheel-drive truck if everything works out. And that's been a two-year process now, I think. So we really have to plan ahead for that, and the price keeps going up and up and up. And I think that one was two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand or something like that to replace that truck. So, well, we're going to get worse. And we keep clogging along, the highway crew does a great job of maintaining the roads. And, and for instance, one of the things that we get tired of is the mini-mud seasons and the big mud seasons throughout the year. And so we're going to try some different material on the roads this year that costs a lot more per yard to buy. But we hope, we're hoping that it will actually, over the course of time, makes the roads better condition. So we won't have so many mud seasons. Thing, like I said, things keep going along fairly well in the highway department, other than the occasional massive flood or whatever. So we, we keep putting money aside for different projects, like bridges and, and other funds to, to make sure we have enough to get through those hard times and then reimburse ourselves afterwards. Any questions? Oh, we're also planning on buying a new motor, because the old one is a two thousand and eleven, I think. So it's, it's getting old, getting some hours on it. So that was, I think with the, with the trade-in, that was still a hundred and seventy-five thousand or something like that. So this bobbled my mind how much stuff costs, but we got to keep going. Now, any questions?
This is by the Spring Road. I'm just curious if there's anything you guys can do about the covered bridges. And I, I don't know if the other bridges get as much damage done to it as Spring Road, but it's two or three times per year. And do you have insurance that pays that, or come out of the tax dollars? And is there any way that you can catch some of the people that are doing that?
Rick was asking about the covered bridge damage, like, for instance, right now on Mill Bridges, the end toward Route one-ten is five or six boards are all smashed because somebody went through and put the rig that's too high in both the boards. But if you, generally, if you can catch the person who did it, your insurance might pay. But otherwise, we, we, the town have to pay. And if you notice on the Spring Road side of the bridge, end of the bridge, there's little short, like, six-inch pieces that Mike Howe put along there so that if somebody comes through, they take the little six-inch pieces off, not the big boards. So when Mike fixes the other end, he's going to do the same thing. So that's, that's a little thing, but that's one thing we're thinking of. Yeah, the, the school bus, no, that was the Larkin Bridge. Yeah, so, so yes, every now and again, we catch somebody, or they turn themselves in or whatever, and we get insurance money. Way in the back, there was a question. Oh, Randy. Thank you. Introduce yourself and stand.
About the ARPA money, how much is going to be freed up, and do you tend to have public input on how that money is spent?
Right, I, I think, I think it was around a couple hundred thousand dollars, which sounds like a huge amount. But the estimates for weatherizing and other stuff that we're going to do for the town hall and town office are like a year old now. So by the time you get around that, those estimates, the actual cost may go up. So it'd be some less than two hundred thousand dollars, if, if I got my figures right. Yes, we're, like John said, when we get around to it, we're going to invite the public to take part and focus on what we might spend the money on.
Just following, I'm basically part of those South Hundredths, I think we've got all the work in progress. In other business, I'll give a little more detail about the, for the unofficial community facilitator of town. I was drawing for Select Board, I know you've got a lot on your plate in twenty fifty-five. Yet to that review of funds that are left and how they can be allocated. Costs are going up, we should really get the efficiency project going as soon as possible to fund safely, because it is going to save money in the long run. I thought the way the ARPA funds with various submissions that are made by citizens from Tunbridge, as well as other conditions and stuff, you know, that the town garage, that's really, we talked a lot about it, so the town garage, road improvements, a lot of equipment, issues that have brought up here. So hopefully, maybe we can get to this by sometime in the summer, having a chance to submit proposals. Once we know what that number is and how they can.
That's odd, and I think the drop dead date for spending this MERC grant was two thousand and twenty-six. So we need to get right on it and get requests for bids and all that stuff real soon, so that's our plan. Anyone else? I can tell you some right now, it's just, we, we believe it's a higher quality. And to back up a little bit, the, the problem that we think we have is there's too many fines in the material we've been using, and the fines just turn to mush. And the material is soft, like I said, you know. But the fines are like powder, and, and when you get the powder wet, it just turns to mush. And so we're trying to buy material from Lebanon or from there that, that doesn't have the fines in it. It's just like real fairly coarse granular stuff, and hopefully that'll set in the roads and not create that mush. But it's going to be a long-term project. You can't just add a half an inch on every road in town and cure it, because once you grade the road the first time, it mixes it all up. And we're, so it's going to take a while. Yes, oh, if you, if you drive on Refroad out to the transfer station or the town garage, they resurface that back in the fall, and so we're watching that closely to, to see how that reacts to the new material. So that's new material on that section of road. Anyone else? Mike, you're holding. Anyone else? All right, we're going to move on.
So if there's no objections, we're going to have the town nurse report. The only thing that we might try, Thornton, I don't know, if maybe we can try the microphone at a distance from here, see if it works. Is anybody okay with us trying that, with the, with the possibility of a terrible screeching noise? And the answer is none. We try. If you, when you're speaking, please try to stand, or please stand up and please try to project. It's kind of hard to hear, and obviously, we're on a leash.
I'm Jody Hoyt. We own one thirty-eight Taylor Road, where my husband's grandmother lived, but we live in South Royalton. I'm the Tunbridge Town Community Nurse, and my report is on page forty-five. But a lot of my report that comes from the Community Nurse Connection, which I provided back on the table where you checked in, is all the graphs that kind of give you more in detail. So it's not in the actual book itself, but it's actually back on the table, because it wouldn't, I only got one page. So, but these just talk about the account types. For example, some of the things that I did this year, and more specifically, some of the things that I helped with. So for example, out of those hundred and fifty-three home visits that I had with clients, most of my support was with social isolation and support, keeping them in their home. Nutrition and food insecurity was seventy-five people I helped with that. Transportation was twenty people, safety in the twenties, family dynamics, and no able caregiver were some of the highest ones. But the, the graphs are in the back that you guys could probably review at lunch, there's, they're all color. I worked really hard on these, so hopefully you guys can take a peek at that. And then also, some of the other things it just talks about is majority of my patients here in Tunbridge are gift-for-clients, up at sixty percent, and then the remainder of Dartmouth and the other remainers that they don't have a primary care. And that's what I really found out this year, a lot of people do not have a primary care, they lost it, or the transition of Dr. Barber leaving, people don't. And so that was my mission this year, and I did a cardiovascular clinic and a primary care clinic to help do that. And I only had fourteen attendees, but I'm hoping next year, if I keep up with the community events, that more people can come in. I'm not here just to help the shut-ins, I'm also here to help other people. And this year, I went to the community volunteer fair and was really looking for people to start, not necessarily a board, but a group of people that, from Tunbridge, that would meet with me, maybe every few months, and talk about what Tunbridge needs. So I'm kind of feeling, I'm doing the best I can of what people are telling me that I'm seeing, but I'd like to hear back from you guys, what kind of events you need. I did a flu and COVID clinic, and I had about thirteen people attend, two in which were not Tunbridge residents. But I think it was helpful, but the numbers are not showing that, maybe that's not what you guys need. So definitely would love to get, contact me or the Select Board about getting a group of people started and giving me feedback on what kind of community events people would like and other things that I could help with. And I think my community report kind of summed it up, but I had a hundred and fifty-three home visits. I had four hundred and, I think, twelve communications. And the only downfall I've had all year is I did not have an email. So that was one thing, Gmail shut me down. People were sending me medical information, and it shut down the email, the health officer at Tunbridge, it shut it down. And so I did not have an email since August. And so that is the only negative feedback I've been getting, is that people are emailing me and not reaching back. It says I do not have an email. And so Rudy did get me an email this month at Tunbridge, and I think, I believe it's Rudy, but it's, Rudy has it, but it's communitynursetunbridge@vt.org, and that is starting up this month. So that email, I can only check it at the town clerk right now. Rudy's trying to help me get it on my phone, or we, at the last Select Board meeting, talked about getting me a laptop so that I can access it at home. But right now, best way to contact me is my phone number, text me, or see me in person, which I am totally open to, and that's what you'll see in my graph, is that majority of the ways that I'm communicated with is people are just stopping me, neighbors, friends, community members who are concerned, and they're just reaching out to me, which is totally acceptable, and I think it's been working very well with just, you know, you reaching out, concerned about somebody in the community. And then I just go and check on them and see if they need me, and some people do, some people don't. And the only last thing, I've had a lot of loss this year, and a lot of clients. We've all felt it, and I'm sorry I'm going to cry, because I've gotten to know these clients really well. And we've lost some really nice clients this year, they passed away. And I got to be with them from the start until their end of life, and it was an amazing experience. And the feedback that I've gotten, I'm sure people here will talk to you about it at lunch, I'm sure, or if they're open to it. But it's been a great experience being able to help you guys, and you guys increased my hours last year from eight to twelve, and I've really felt that I've made a big difference, and hoping that we can increase a few more hours. Tunbridge definitely seems to be doing, I think the program's doing really great. Any questions? Can you repeat the question? Yeah, so we have, the flyers are actually in the back, you can check that out. We are actually at the volunteer clinic, I was looking for volunteers to help me inventory it. I have so much right now that I can't keep track, and the hours that I'm allotacading, I'm going out and seeing people, so I don't have time right now to count everything, or I do count it, and then things are coming and going so quickly and coming back to me that I don't know. So in the spring, I actually have a group of volunteers that I am so thankful for. They signed up, and they're going to come help me this spring and count everything. And I think I'm going to do an Excel sheet and maybe have like a link or something. The only thing right now is it is in this community building, the church has donated to let me use by the South Tunbridge Church. It's in that community building, that's why you see it plowed out now, and you probably see me park there all the time. I'm always in and out, but it is not safe or open to public. So the way it is right now is it, is it appointment only, and I am working on Judy Tucker and a couple other volunteers are going to see it. That's one thing that I'd like to increase and have some volunteers on, of, I won't be the only contact for it, because right now, it's a lot, it's eating up a lot of my time just managing the closet. So I'm hoping to find some people to help me with that, so that when you need something, we have other people that can go and open the closet for you, but they also can, I don't want everyone in and out so that we can't keep track. So we have like two or three people and myself that can safely give equipment. And then, once we get an inventory, doing that Excel sheet so that it would be more open. But right now, we have hospital beds, we have an electric recliner, we have walkers, modes, shower chairs, assistant devices that help you get your shoes on, your socks on. We have pads, disposable pads, significant amount of those. And we have, we don't have any wheelchairs right now, so that is a big thing that we come and go. Wheelchairs seem to be a really big, and the Tunbridge Fair seems to be a big time for me. I was want, and so a lot of people, I couldn't help at the Tunbridge Fair time, because I was done my hours for that week, and people really wanted equipment. So next year, I'm preparing. So next year I'm preparing that, I'm gonna have a team of volunteers to help me during that Tunbridge Fair time to get out the crutches and the walkers and the wheelchairs so that nobody gets turned down this year about accessing the equipment. But I think the medical closet is going great and it's one of my, I'm really proud of that for the town nurse. And definitely open to any donations. And wheelchairs are a big one that everyone seems to really need. And so if anyone has any extra wheelchairs laying around, right now I have none. So if anyone would like to donate, that would be helpful. So you can contact me directly and I come like meet you right away. You know, I just met Kathy yesterday. If not, the town clerk is taking them for me. But if it's a real big item, like a bed or a really big wheelchair, you just contact me directly and I make an, I make an appointment with you pretty quickly. Yeah, it stacks up quickly. And then I don't have a car big enough to fit it all. And so I'm, I know a lot of you have helped me move it down. So anybody who is willing to volunteer, if you're at the town clerk, and what you can do is just leave it outside the building. And then as soon as Mariah tells me there's stuff outside there, I can get it in the building. It's just me getting it from the town clerk to the off, to the building. I, I have a smaller SUV with three-row seating and car seats. So I can't fit a lot of wheelchairs and walkers and stuff in my car. So that's been the only downfall of the medical closet is just getting it to the closet. Yeah, and getting it in and out. So definitely if any volunteers.
A quick question about your email address.
Yes.
In the town report, you have a new email address. Is that the correct one?
Is it? Can you read it to me? Yes, that is my new email. And I can only access it via the town clerk right this minute. But Rudy's helping me get it either on my phone or we are talking about my grant. I still have grant money from the grant that I got last year of buying me a laptop for the nurse position, which would help me with other things such as writing these, because right now I'm writing these reports on my own personal. And getting a laptop would be a lot easier for writing my nursing notes and things. Any other questions?
I have a question, Jody.
Yes.
We've gone from, it's twenty-four from like an eighteen thousand dollar budget to this year it's at thirty-five thousand. Where do you see this, this nurse program growing to?
Yeah, so great question. So he's asking, the budget went up quite a bit. So when I initially started this program, I got lots of grants and I also took a significant pay. I volunteered a lot of my time because I wanted this program to be successful. It was a passion of mine. But I took a rate of thirty dollars an hour and everyone saw that. And so I took a really low pay rate. So most nurses, we went, I met with a select board and US rate, I was the lowest paid nurse in the New England, actually, last year. And so I came to the select board and they did, bought me up to, to forty dollars an hour, which is still pretty low for a nurse's rate. But I'm not here, I just wanna, you know, make a living. I'm not here to make a bunch of money. I just wanna pay my mortgage. And so we went up to forty dollars an hour. And then, so that would change the budget, right? Because we went up ten dollars. And then also we were hoping to increase our rate to sixteen hours a week. So that was the hope. We're going to increase to sixteen hours. And at forty, at forty hours a week, that does not include mileage reimbursement and supplies, which I've been, get, I got a grant and I'm hoping to get another grant to cover those expenditures. But that's why I'm trying to get a board together to also help me and Mary Ann. Because right now finding nursing grants is a, is a lot of work. And to me, having to do administration time takes away from me seeing clients. So it's a balance of right now I prioritize going to see clients. And now the grants are kind of falling behind. So that's why the budget went up because I wasn't able to get as many grants this year. And I, because I prioritize client care. But if anyone's willing to next year or, you know, or help with the grants, it would lower the budget. I just haven't.
I'm just, just the main thing was I wonder where it's gonna go.
Yeah, so it would up me from, so I was eight hours, I was twelve hours, starting in November because we hadn't had a chance to meet. And then November first. So I was eight hours for majority of this year. That's why I came in under budget last year. But we are upping the budget to say, because I, we didn't get it approved for the twelve hours and the raise until November first. And then they estimated, so this was an estimate by the select board and us, that it was, because we went through the numbers, because Chelsea also is putting in a bid. And Chelsea came about the same, same rate, but for only twelve hours a week, in which, because most nurses are coming in at a higher rate an hour. So I'm coming in, I can give you guys more hours because I'm coming in at a lower rate an hour. And so that was our estimate. That's where I hoped to be, is about sixteen to twenty hours is my goal for Tunbridge. I think that that would be, you know, obviously if I could get full grants and be forty hours a week, I would love that. But right now we're having a hard time finding grants. So we're, Mary Ann and I are working on it, but we're hopeful that in the future, this budget will come down and it'll be only fifty percent burden on the taxpayers and more grant. But right now, because of my prioritizing clients, I didn't get as much grant funding. Hospice? So I am not, repeat the question. She's wondering if I do not have hospice. So when I do end-of-life care, is there not hospice involved? Ninety percent of the time hospice is involved. Ninety percent of the time with a lot of, there's lots of resources helping my clients. I am not the sole provider of cares. I am a person that helps you connect and navigate all these things. Because you can have hospice, but flounder because they do not communicate well with you. They are short-staffed and they, you need help with private caregivers and less. So I am that person that fills in. I'm the person that like helps you find a private caregiver if they can't come up. I'm the person that you call on Sunday at eight PM because your catheter's clogged and you don't know what to do. And nobody's answering your phone call. I do the best I can to answer everyone. I know that a lot of my clients are elderly and they're not here today. So they can't speak. But I know that a lot of them are very, and I know a lot of people who speak of this, are very grateful for my help and I've been able to keep them in their homes. And some, some of them I can't. The families don't want them in their homes anymore and they have to go to live in assisted living. But majority of my clients are staying and remaining stuck in their homes because I'm helping them do so or helping them navigate the healthcare system by getting them insurance or just, just connect. I mean, a lot of them, just connecting them with a primary caregiver or, you know, I know that I'm not allowed. It's a really challenging position. I can't tell you everybody I'm helping. But I know that there's lots of, there's lots of people in this room that I've helped. I just can't, it's HIPAA and I can't share with you everything I do. But that's why I do my very best to do broad circumstances of what I'm helping with. And everybody's different. So I appreciate it.
So President's not here, so we'll move on to trustee of public funds.
Rob, I'm from LA. The only thing I have to say this morning is if you're interested in the position that I hold now, it's going to be open because I'm not going to be a candidate for trustee of public funds for another three years. So if you have an interest in investments that the town is so, we are so very happy to have so many dollars that we have invested, which become available to the different organizations that they represent. And if you so would be interested in managing, working with Liz and with Matt Frost, it's, it's a lot of fun. Not a lot of, lot of hours that it takes to do that. And if you still have an interest, be ready to be known. Do you want to know how many years I've done? I have no idea.
Hi, my name is Liz Rourke. I live up on Zicarman Hill Road. I'm one of the trustees of public funds. I'd like to take a minute to thank Rob for his innumerable years of service. He has incredible institutional memory. So he's got the receipts on everybody. So we're gonna really miss him. But as he said, it's a pretty small commitment. And if you like numbers and thinking about money, it's a great, interesting position in the town. So our report is on page thirty-eight of the town report. As John mentioned, all these reports go through the end of the fiscal year, which means June of twenty twenty-four. So it's a number of months out of date. But through the end of the fiscal year, as you can see from the report, things did very well. We've kind of had an unprecedented run of good luck, I guess, with our economy and the market. I think Rudy had alluded to the last time things were not going well, two thousand and eight, the Great Recession. So things are doing well. I spoke with our investment advisor yesterday. Despite the winter of uncertainty and volatility, we are still up as of yesterday. Things change quickly, but, but the accounts are still in good shape, sustainable, which means all the different groups who benefit can continue to draw from them as needed. So are there any questions? Okay, thank you. And thank you again, Rob, for your service.
So I will entertain a motion to accept the officers' reports as heard. Somebody, I don't know. Any debate? Let's move in second to accept the officer's report. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Here's the ayes have it. The ayes have it. The motion carries. Moving on to Article Three, shall the voters authorize payment of real and personal property taxes on Monday, November fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, by delivery to town offices postmarked on or before that date, with delinquent taxes having an interest charge of one percent per month or a fraction thereof for the first three months, and one and a half percent each month pursuant to thirty-two VSA Section five-one-three-six, to thereafter, and an eight percent penalty charged against them from the due date? What is your pleasure? Is there a second? Debate? There are no debates. It's moving seconded that we shall authorize the payment of real personal property taxes. There's no objections. I'll skip the rest. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Here's the ayes have it. The ayes have it. Moving on to Article Four, shall the voters authorize the town treasurer pursuant to thirty-two VSA Section four-seven-nine-one to collect current taxes? What is your pleasure? Who was that? Joe? Debate? During the debate, ready for the question? The question is, shall the voters authorize the town treasurer pursuant to thirty-two VSA Section four-seven, four-seven-nine-one to collect current taxes? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Here's the ayes have it. The ayes have it. The motion carries. Onto Article Five. Now we're rolling. Shall the voters authorize general fund expenditures for operating expenses of eight-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars, of which five hundred, five, five-hundred-and-seventeen-hundred, excuse me, five-hundred-and-seventeen-nine-hundred-and-forty-six thousand shall be raised by taxes? What is your pleasure? Is there a second? We second that into debate. Rob?
I was a very good citizen last night. Joe was over at Captain's School meeting. And a fair majority of our taxes are calculated of what we give. And so did somebody give, give us a data of what happened last night? Is it not, was it turned down?
So Rob asked whether the budget, the school budget, which makes up the majority of taxes, was passed. Anyone want to speak to that? Nancy? So Nancy said that the budget passed with a paper ballot vote of sixty-five or thirty-five. Any other questions or debate? And Joe said it was a four-hundred-dollar tax increase for, for two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Can you say your name? Tax rates fifteen cents on school. Any other discussion?
Yeah, Gabe Freitag, but no. I also want to note here that the sheriff's budget, which was slightly contentious last year, is going up twenty percent. Did the select board speak to that?
So the sheriff's budget has gone up twenty percent. You'd like the select board to speak to that?
Sure. Let's see. Oh, they, they increased their grower rate. The life, I can't remember what it was. Oh, yeah, well, yeah, we employ one to kind of sheriff's office. And they increased their rate from, I can't remember, sixty-five to seventy-six. Something, they increased their hourly rate. So if we were gonna keep the same numbers of hours that they control the town, we have to increase the budget. So that was part of the reason. I can't remember. I guess that's all the reason Mike says. So yes, that's it.
Any other questions? Lauren?
It was really helpful and impactful. I know what they're doing. Because mostly I think I'm part of the other, other things. In addition to the report next year, saying there are arrests or other, or.
Every time they bill us, they, they give us a spreadsheet of what they've been doing in town. It's itemized, every traffic stop, every ticket that's given or every bin check they do or, or anything like that. So we, we have that. So I guess we could compile a list of the top ten or whatever. Put that down a report next year or a joint report for select them.
Before over, just to follow up while we're talking about the police budget. I did notice in the revenue, is there any revenue generated by any of their traffic stops? And I know there was a conversation last year that the panel has had with what our, we have some ordinance that allows the town to receive some income from the traffic stops. Has that been a conversation with the board?
We, we've heard what people have said. The question was, do we, the town, get any income from traffic stops, like speeding through the whatever? And we don't right now. But I think we have to have some sort of ordinance for like hit one ten in order to get a portion of that money. So yes, we could work on that.
Yeah, it'd be great to see you guys prioritize that, just, you know, as the budget is increasing.
Yeah, and also, when we were budgeting, I was thinking about, how do people think about policing in town? Are they happy with it? Are they unhappy? Should we spend more? Should we spend less? And, and the sheriff says we really should spend less because then you just don't get enough in-town time. And I guess I agree with that. But let me know, let all of us know what you think about policing in town so we can know if people are happy and unhappy.
Any other discussion? Before I call back, go back to Gabe?
Sorry, sorry again. But this is, this represents another ten percent tax increase. For the town portion, we're gonna get ten percent from the school, the hour. And you're looking at like a ten percent employees rate this year. We got a break-in under April, you know, somewhere, you know, weather's a tear, you know, twenty percent. You know, we just need to get less of it. You know, this is going to be a pretty substantial tax hit for a lot of people here.
Well, like John has said in his eloquent selectman's reports over the years, that this, our budget is our budget, and if you want to amend it, you can. So if you want to come to select board meetings and talk to us about it, you can, we encourage that. So, so we put forth in the budget what we think we should spend. And if you want to, if the people want to spend less on any particular item, you let us know.
Done.
If the town, the whole thing, uh, from the sheriff's stop available or speeding or something, that we do not get any of that money for town?
The question was, the question was, if the sheriff stops somebody in town, we do not get, the town does not get any money? That's correct. Where does that money go, Ted wants to know? I see, Joe. So some of it goes to judicial and the rest goes back to the sheriff's department? So the question is, they get, they get money out of the stocks? That's correct. Any other discussion, sir? So he said that last year they had a representative here to ask for money, and now there's nobody here to report.
Perhaps next year we'll ask someone to represent the sheriff's department and have them here. So we definitely remember that.
If there are no objections, we have two people have spoken, or will it want to speak more than twice, if there are objections, then we can win. Hearing objections, Joe? So are you looking to make an amendment to the, okay? So, just to, just to be clear, just to state the amendment, your, your request is to amend the budget to reduce the, the sheriff's amount to zero. Do you just state that? So there's currently an amendment on the floor that is being seconded? Seconded? So there's currently an amendment on the floor to, to bring the sheriff's department budget to zero? The question is, does that mean there is no sheriff, sheriff coverage?
Would you please do the one ten?
I think you know what I'm talking about, maybe I don't, but if you call nine-one-one, and no one else responds, the state police will. Unless it's the middle of the night, then they probably will anyway. But, yeah, I guess if we vote to defund, take the sixty thousand out, then we won't have any, any contracted police coverage as of July first of this year.
Further discussion? I'm behind you, man, sorry. So Eileen said that we don't, there's no representative here to tell us where that money's going, and at the least we should have is a representative here to speak to that.
Like I said, we, we, the select board receive a printout of what they have done every billing cycle. And so I can't tell you exactly what they've done, when they've done it, but they do do what they are contracted to do. Yeah, and we have it, we have all that stuff in the town office, so if anybody wants to read up on it, figure it out. Anyone can do it, and I guess we can vote however we want to vote. But I would suggest we vote this down, just because no coverage is not good.
Kathy first.
I really appreciate what you just said, Gary. Can you, in the select board, speak to what you are seeing? Seems like it was an oversight to not invite the sheriff's department here today. And that's what I'm hearing, and I'm wondering if you could speak to what you're seeing and whether you think it's valuable?
Asking to, for the select board to speak to what they have seen as in regards to the sheriff's department.
On way more elegant than I.
Just to back up a bit, historically, Orange County Sheriff's Department used to cover town bridge. We contracted with them and got these spreadsheets too. I don't know if anybody remember if they did a report in the annual report. I don't remember seeing one. And then, as most of you know, the Orange County Sheriff's Department sort of self-destructed and barely exists anymore. In the interim, when that happened, in the interim, we, we shortly hired self-royal police to cover us through the end of last fiscal year. And then here, we agreed to hire Windsor County Sheriff's Department to, going forward, to cover us. We've been pretty happy with Chief Palmer, Ryan Palmer. The sheriff, I guess, he's come to a lot of meetings, both Zoom and in person. And also, I think last year, you probably heard from Deputy Jackson Powell, who lives in town. Is sort of the main point person. He's not the only deputy who comes here to do policing, but it's nice to have a law enforcement officer living in town that knows most of us. And, and I think with various stops, he has a good sense for, you know, when it should be a warning and when someone's really out of control and should, should be ticketed. And I just, just let me know that Becky Hoyt, as treasurer, says we actually do get a small amount of money when there's stops made. I think there probably is some way we could pass an ordinance with all of us agreeing to it, that we might get more. But I know it's also very tricky because it's, it may not cover, say, for example, Route one-ten, and maybe that's a state highway. And I think you have to pass ordinance for like city limits essentially, or town roads. And that's where there's more of a cost share that we would, we would end up with more money. But I think that has to be approved, and we have to follow Vermont statute along those lines. This coming up. So I think it's our oversight that we, I think if we had asked Sheriff Palmer to send to an area, he would have probably sent Jackson Powell and given a report. We, it's pretty much, we've seen pretty much the same things that happened before, and they've been very responsive. If we say we want a presence here, or we, we want you to be somewhat on the back roads. Speeding in town, such a big problem, I think. We're trying to slow people going through town, back down to the thirty miles an hour. That's, that's been an ongoing challenge. So as far as we know, we're, as far as we're concerned, we're pretty happy with the coverage. But we also understand it's more and more expensive, so if the voters want to, want to cut it out, that's, that's your option.
I have a couple of questions. One, if they're getting one of that, shouldn't that be a line item deal or in a line item account report? If it is, why is it not? Second of all, if it isn't, if it is in a contract against multiple centers and report, and we don't have the pockets, where does that accountability lie? Is that, or who is the select board?
So the question was, how come if we are getting income from the traffic stop, why there not a line item on the budget? And the other question is, is how come they haven't submitted a report?
Well, this is page nine. Under civil fine. What's it saying, huh? Three hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty-six cents. Yeah, it's the first of January, so it could be something like that. But anyway, we can work on that, and we can do what we need to do, make a little more money. But we don't want to make too much money because we don't want people to get that.
They also partner with the school district too, the Windsor County, all the school districts, and they provide a lot of help. I mean, just the amount of drugs and stuff around our communities that we don't see as much anymore, I think, is a testament to what they're doing in. He was at the Halloween party, the sheriffs were there representing, making sure everything was safe because there was a possibility of a whole lot of traffic. So I think they're around when we need them. They're even covering Chelsea now because Chelsea didn't have coverage, so partnering there is not an option. And I think of having nothing. I called the Vermont State Police before when we got broken into, about nowhere. So it's kind of nice to have somebody we can follow on.
Liz?
I'm going mostly on memory, so some of you might remember better. But it's my understanding that, under Vermont state law, the sheriff, your county sheriff, so Orange County sheriff, provides a certain amount of coverage that's paid for through their sheriff's budget. And I do believe that is overseen at the county level by our side judges up at the Orange County courthouse. Historically, the Orange County Sheriff's Department would come to us each year. It was often Deputy Sheriff Egum and asked for an additional voluntary contribution. It was often in the order of three thousand, four thousand. And then we moved to a slightly different model where we were contracting for them to do traffic enforcement. But again, those county sheriffs, your own county, should be providing a certain amount of coverage, and that budget is done at the county level. And I think to answer some of your questions, that accountability happens at those meetings. When, because the, our sheriffs in disarray right now, and we're not the only county struggling with this, we now have to pay a different county as a contractor. But again, all their budget, revenue, all that is done at the Windsor County level. You'd have to go to those meetings to kind of see. So I think somebody made the point that really it's the select board who is holding them accountable as a contractor. And John, maybe this is something you can look into. My understanding is our legislature is looking at changing this whole system because the county sheriffs have become so dysfunctional in some counties. But again, we used to, the line item is to be zero. Then it went up to three thousand, four thousand with Orange County. Because of the dysfunction, we are now at sixty thousand, which is quite a bit different than zero. But they do also have revenue, budget at the county level, but that's not something we get reports on. You have to go to those meetings. So that's just my memory. So if there's anyone who knows better, correct me, please.
So Dave said that the Orange County sheriff is understaffed. VSP is understaffed, and if you call nine-one-one, there, there, somebody may not show up. And in his opinion, they've done a good job.
Bill Carper, Angel Road. I'm voting to support the funding for this. Three big reasons. First is I'm a newbie in town, I've been there two years, but I remember when I moved here, there was business, there was a spate of burglaries going on around here. I also know that I went to training a couple of months ago, a first-aid ambulance, where she's here. We now get services from Angels Peak, and it's way risked and issues and challenges that first responders have. And one of the big problems that we don't care a lot about because if it's handled quietly is drugs. But there's a lot of drug trafficking, there's a lot crime that is occurring because of it. And just about two hours later, speaking about the things that they are doing, they're naked. I mean, Calhoun Church, it's in drugs are just coming up from the south. And maybe you don't see it on your road, maybe we don't see it in the schools, but they're getting called out on it in all the areas that they service regularly. I also finally wanted to just correct somebody who indicated that they came asking for a line. It was actually one of the voters, it was one of our citizens of town here, that actually made a motion to increase the amount to like a third thousand dollars. So it must have started, you're not the call. There was no following support for that.
Just a quick summary, he's been here for two years. When he got here, drug, drug traffic, or there was larger issues, criminal issues. They met with first responders, and the first responders talked about all the things that they don't see. And he also pointed out that it was a motion to, there was a motion to increase the budget for the sheriff's department. Can you what? So currently, we have an amendment on the floor to reduce the sheriff's budget to zero. So you can add a secondary amendment to that? I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure what a friendly amendment is. So there, there's a proposal for a secondary amendment to level fund the sheriff's department. So let me just get through the amendment first. So there's a, there's a secondary amendment, which of course would, we technically, actually, you know what we should do, we should vote on the first one to make sure that one's there, and then we should go to a secondary, and re-amend. That way it's not negating. So that's what I would recommend we do.
I can call out, I've written to some people, pretend that there's one of the reasons in this area that is the domestic violence. And we require the police to be present at some of the, most of the situations before the ambulance crew can go in. Particularly, I mean, we've seen it in the news where people respond without police staff. And our caregivers are, you know, injured or even still. And our caregivers are, um, you know, injured or even still. So I, I don't know why we're doing all or nothing. Uh, that really, I, I agree, um, with at least doing a level, um, budget and, and not going to zero. I, I live on one ten, I'm just, I live in the village. And I see, it is so wonderful to see the presence of police. Um, even just going to the village and just taking on, um, our payroll. I have not had cars coming out of the village to address. So, um, you know, there is, there is, thanks people may not see them on the back roads, but I can know that they follow there. They, um, they, uh, tip us on the back road. So I, I just think that we really need people on our payroll.
Hi, Lori Berger, I live in the village, right on one ten at Roskin Spring Road. And, uh, she thinks, well, yes, it would have been nice to have someone here, but you don't expect that of every contractor. Uh, it would also have been nice to have maybe a report so you have a little better idea of exactly what it is that we're getting in that contract without necessarily going to go to the town office and get up. That said, um, I live right in the village and for a long time until now, I would come home after chores at night or it's dark, I would see cars. Park where I park, I'm looking on the corner of that there, so we don't have a wrong way at work. So I park across from the store. And, um, in the morning I'd come back out and around the litter, the oil and wheels. It was fairly obvious what was going on across from my house on a regular basis. I have not seen that since we had the coverage in town. I was at the point, it breaks my heart to say this, but I was at the point where I was nervous, I mean, chores at night. Getting out of my car and going into my house. When I first moved here thirty years ago, I left the keys in my car. I never locked anything. And it has definitely made a difference to have police presence in town.
Just to summarize, Lori noted that she's seen, as a result, the increased police presence last year, a decrease in some of the issues that she had seen prior.
I'm looking at, um, and I went to know if I recall the things as they've occurred around the, um, this. It was mentioned that Boris asked that, um, he keeps the money from the traffic. We learned that, um, it goes to, um, administrative, whatever. And then the rest goes to the officer or the sheriff's department, whatever. And that was, as I understand it, a vote of contention because there are many. Well, and we don't have a report for them, so we actually, no idea what they, well, you don't think, they're making thousands of all these, um, the traffic stops. But we don't know anything. So, um, that was how it came about, I would say. We, uh, well, that doesn't, to me, it makes sense to just throw a lot of everything. And we all like it, you know, but he's perfect. So, um, I'm thinking um, that they need to be funded and we need to have a report. So whether they come in with money, we want to know that they, and I personally, that you know, how many, um, they made. They borrowed from it, um, maybe it's totally reasonable, but I mean, what everyone is not open to these things, but we have no way of knowing. So I don't, I just want to know if I've done it yet.
She said, Jessica, we need to have a report, we need to have more information of exactly what they're doing.
Uh, one ten, I think, call it middle country, a bit shy of the more country. And I could hook in, could be, and, um, fill in, uh, the story left off. I have seen a difference in people trying to pass that one of the more dated. It's very hard to watch when someone thinks they're gonna speed ahead there. I have seen a difference. I think the type of vehicle present and random thought has made a difference. I also feel when I leave the library after my efforts and it's dark, I take my light, my man, to try and open my car. Uh, I have seen a difference. Um, I do like the second proposal, um, I don't want it to be lost, but I do believe the capability is, is definitely a thousand.
So she talked about, uh, how she's seen a decrease in speeding issues around her house in North Tumbridge.
Why shouldn't?
So there's a, there's a motion to call a question. What that means is, and it's been seconded, what that means is that we're ending debate. Uh, that's contingent upon a two-thirds majority. So all those in favor of calling the question, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. All right, so we're moving on to vote. What we're voting on now is a proposed amendment to the, um, to the overall, to the overall general fund to, to authorize the town to reduce the number, the money to zero for the, for the department. So therefore, if you are in favor of reducing from, I think, sixty thousand dollars to zero, you would say aye. If you're opposed to that, you would say nay. Does that make sense? Any questions? So all those in favor of proposed amendment to reduce the budget from sixty thousand with the sheriff's department to zero, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Appears the nays have it. The nays have it, the motion is carried. So now we are back to article, back to article five as it stands, unless there is a proposal for another amendment. Was there a second? Second, a lot of seconds. So the amendment on the table is to level fund the sheriff's department at fifty thousand dollars and to require a town report. Again, the discussion.
They raised their rate. So if we level fund, we're gonna have fewer hours. Could you share with us how many fewer hours we might have level fund?
So they raised their rate, and if we lower the amount, that would be a lower number. The question is, well, there'd be a lower number of hours, and the question is, how many hours would they compile? Mike's country numbers.
Uh, Mike's gonna, calculations, and it's gonna be about ten hours a month less of coverage.
And what?
What, what?
We're getting now.
Please, please maintain order and raise your hand if you want to be recognized.
So, ten hours less than what, what are we currently getting?
The question is, what are the hourly, how many hours are we currently getting, it's ten hours less, less of what?
What is it now? Son of a math teacher.
It could be so.
It's just over sixty now. Oh, sixty hours per month now, and so the reduction of, well, that is a line, yeah. So I would say that'd be about fifty.
Further discussion?
How, how, um, two things. Last year at town meeting, we did not appropriate funds for this. We left it up slightly, we voted that, that they wanted to increase, um, some surveillance and whatever. If you look at the line item on page twelve, it still doesn't need to move the budget of fifty thousand dollars towards that expense, right? And as of January first, we've only spent twenty-one, twenty thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. So we didn't even spend half that amount, and that included the time that they were hurt on the trail. So I would assume that they probably won't even bring fifty thousand dollars for this this full year.
So Rob just made the point that the sheriff's department was budgeted for fifty thousand dollars as of June, uh, January first. They had only spent twenty thousand dollars or been paid twenty thousand dollars, so it seems reasonable that they would not.
So I don't, I don't think there's anything wrong with it.
So there's nothing wrong with reducing the line items, sorry.
There is. So first, I've been simply by obligation, our obligation, um, they reported, they're reporting in their monthly, um, uh, their monthly statement. Um, and the select, our, select board of funding review of that believes that we're getting service there, we should have that forty thousand a year. I've heard from residents that, um, they need to please about it, it seems like we're getting the service that we expect from them. And so now, it seems like the only question is, they're asking for, uh, they're asking for a, a price increase. Is that valid? Is it reasonable and can we afford it? I, I don't think the question of all of this is about, I think, it seems like going forward next year, we're gonna ask you to report. But they've met their obligations for it, it seems like this year. And, um, I think the only question is, can we afford it and is it reasonable that we think so?
The sheriff's department has, has met their contractual obligations with a report. And, and the question is, is it reasonable to ask for them, or what, I guess, what the rate is, what the reason for the increases?
Well, it is, question that are, question that are, is do we think that that requested increase is reasonable?
Do we think that that, thank you, that, that, uh, requested increase is reasonable and can we afford it? So, let's call a question, there was a second. And again, so what that means is that by calling the question, we're ending debate, that requires a two-four-thirds majority. All those in favor of calling the question, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. So that means we are ending debate. And so now what we're moving to is the amendment once again. And the amendment is to, is to level fund the sheriff's department at fifty thousand dollars with a requirement for them to submit a report. So again, if you, if you say aye, you're supporting that, you're supporting the fifteen thousand dollar level fund. If you are voting nay, you're opposed to that. So all those in favor of level funding the sheriff's department, fifty thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars with a required report, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Appears the ayes have it. Something called division. So what this requires is, we're gonna do this, um, pretty simply. If you are an aye, we're gonna ask you to stand up and hold your card. Okay, so just wait, just wait, just listen to the instructions before we get going. I'm a teacher, I'm used to this, I know it's exciting. Um, so if you say, so I'm gonna ask to see the ayes first. We're going to, you're to stand up and stay, continue standing until I say so. Um, our town clerk is going to count the votes. And then what we'll do is we'll go to the nays and do the same, and then we'll get the numbers. So if you are supporting the fifty thousand dollar level, please stand and hold your card. So the ayes, we, we seated. Those who are nays, please stand up and hold your card. Not me, like I'm crazy.
You're only subtracting.
Oh, excuse me, sorry, sorry, I screwed that up. Yes, so the, the expenditure, the operating expense is now dropped as, as amended to eight thousand, or eight hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars with five hundred and seventeen thousand. Ten, oh, I can do math. I'm a social studies teacher, by the way. This is, this is why the treasury needs to be here. All right, let me try that again. So eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-one. Right? Confirmed? All right. So is there any more discussion on the budget? For the operating expenses of the general fund? Here. Eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, sixty-one dollars. To be raised by taxes. Five oh, five oh seven, nine, nineteen. Five oh seven, nine four, nine four six. Thanks, Ellen. Any other discussion? Here, no discussion, I will state the article, shall the voters authorize the general fund expenditures for operating expenses to be amended? Eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars, of which the amended five hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars shall be raised by taxes. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. It appears the ayes have it. The ayes have it, the motion carries. So we're going to recess for lunch. So we'll reconvene at one o'clock. Thank you. Oh, yeah, and if you want lunch tickets, they're over there in the corner by two second. We will now move to article six. Shall the voters authorize highway fund expenditures of one million, two hundred and eighty-seven, nine hundred and ninety-five thousand, of which one million, one hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars shall be raised by taxes. What is your pledge, Lord? We agree, ten second. Back in, debate, discussion. The discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'm ready for the question. The question is, shall the voters authorize highway, uh, excuse me, authorize highway fund expenditures of one million, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars, of which one million, one hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and forty-five shall be raised by taxes. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. It appears the ayes have it. The ayes have it. Moving on to article seven. Shall the town vote to incorporate fifty-four thousand, five hundred dollars to support the Tumbridge vault? Shall the town vote to appropriate fifty four thousand, five hundred dollars to support the Tombridge Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated? So who? Who the person? Discussion? Randy? Oh. No discussion. Any discussion? Everybody's falling, they wanna go home. Seeing no discussion, are you ready for the question? The question is, shall the town vote to appropriate fifty four thousand, five hundred dollars to support the Tombridge Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. It appears the ayes have it. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Moving on to article six, shall the town appropriate eighteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty two dollars and fifty cents? To support the following services, service to social services pursuant to twenty four V S D two six nine one. There are no objections, I'm not going to read that list. What is your pleasure? Move, okay. Second? Discussion? Lot of discussion. Uh, we, we are back in the microphone business, Thornton, we're together. Oh, there he is, it's a little Laura.
Laura Ginsburg. I would like to amend this article to remove the three thousand dollars associated with the Tyvee Farm and Camps from the appropriation, which would make the total fifteen thousand, nine fifty two and fifty cents.
Seconded. So right now, we have an amendment on the table to remove three thousand dollars from the Tyvee Farms and Camps, which would change the total money, well, we'll get to that, to fifteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty two dollars. Discussion? So Bill wants to know why that would be back.
Hey, James and the Wire, I'm Monarch Hill Road. Uh, so, I, I was gonna suggest the same thing, but Tyvee, um, on the website, they list themselves as a nonprofit. They don't seem to actually be a five oh one C three where they have to report what you're actually spending and what they're spending it on. But basically that, like, there's, I would say that there's probably five oh one C threes that serve Tombridge that we'd be better spend money on. For example, Safe Line or one of the other folks that are here that are, you know, probably providing more tangible benefit to the town. They're not a five oh one, great. Oh, Bethel. They're also not here, they're in Nell.
Well, we'll bring out, we'll bring out, we're back in the microphone business.
We're not able to move again from, uh, Platte. I would, um, like to amend our budget for Safe Line, as I always do, to, um, instead of the seven hundred and fifty, to a thousand dollars. And, and I'm thinking it would be appropriate to, to have that as the number in our budget, and I don't quite know how to propose that. Anyway, um, as it stands now, uh, just for Tombridge alone, they, I believe they spend thirty dollars a person um, that they're serving. Um, there is in the Safe Line folder, it explains how many people, how many times. And again, with all that's happening with our economy, with, with all kinds of things, people are angry and they're hurting the people they live with. There are lots of children who are being served, um, and it didn't occur to me, but yes, the police have to be there for, for things. It used to be that when guns were involved, a lot of them are, most of them are killed by gun violence, with domestic violence. Anyway, so the points show up for that. Um, anyway, so they spend probably fifteen percent of their total budget on overhead. All the rest of it goes to directly to serve people. Um, anyway, so I, I, it's very worth our while to, and kind, to, um, to make our share a thousand dollars at least.
So Laura, I'm gonna ask you to hold that, as the amendment on the table is to, is specific to the Tri- or the, uh, the Tyvee Farm and Camps. So we're, that's okay, we'll come back to that, once we get through this, you can make that amendment. Are there any, is there any other discussion specific to the Tyvee Farms and Camps? Gonna make sure to go from this side all the way back to that side.
Hi, Roy Burger, writing one ten on the death corner. Um, so, as a, especially as a first person myself, I took a look at that and I thought, hmm, this is interesting. And all there is is a website listed, there's nothing that tells us anything about what these people do or why the town of Tombridge should be voting money to support them. And, uh, you know, if you can't bother to do that, I'm not sure why I should be bothering to give you my tax money.
So. So Joe is calling a question, is there a second to that? Second, so again, two thirds majority, call the question ends debate, all those in favor of calling the question say aye. All those opposed say nay. All right, so we've done debates, and now what we're doing is voting on, voting on the amendment proposed to reduce or to take away the Tyvee Farm and Camps by three thousand dollars. So again, if you vote in front of it, you're agreeing to take away that money. If you're voting against that, you're, you're voting to keep it. So all those in favor of the amendment to reduce Tyvee Farms to zero by three thousand dollars, say aye. All those opposed say nay. Here's the ayes have it. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Now, Lenore, if you'd like to make your amendment.
For Safe Line to be a consistent thousand dollars in our budget, um, from this time forward, rather than the seven fifty. And I already went wrong about how worthy they are. And what a good deal it is for us.
Is there a second to that amendment? Second, or big one, discussion?
And now I'm gonna call for a screening. I don't know how to say this the legal way, but Vermont Family Network does not have anything in here that I believe of. Um, and normally it's our history that if they don't have a report, we do not give them money. Um, so I would like to say, maybe it's an amendment on the amendment, that that's.
So let's, let's deal with the amendment we have right now. We'll, we'll come, we'll come back to that one.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Any other discussion on, on adding two hundred and fifty dollars to the Safe Line appropriation? Please.
Yeah, somebody is parade, uh, I'm up the road on one ten. And, um, I'm actually, uh, very involved in circling NAR, and spend a lot of my time there. And, um, as of its, oh. As it expands, it's worked. Um, it, it's doing some fantastic things, as well as helping the growing number of, um, abused men, women, and children who are involved with the domestic violence and sexual abuse. And, um, each week on Tuesdays, we go to court, uh, support people who are straight. Or somebody who's been contacted with advice, with emotional, financial use. Plus, uh, I think that, um, I, I wanna speak for raising it to a thousand dollars and making that come out over the next few years. Thank you.
Further discussion? Okay, please state your name, where do you live on?
Hi, uh, Amy Wright, Monarch Hill Road. Um, also, I would say that it's not just for, like, the moments of crisis is happening. It does add, like, a hotline that you can call outside of just an explicit incident happening. Maybe you could do, like, a lot of preventative options or an option for people to take so they don't feel bad about choices that they make later.
Any other discussion before we sleep again?
I forgot to mention, um, in addition to the, to what we do there is, uh, we are working with schools and libraries and teen centers to help in effect, um, that's prevention. That means in awareness, uh, to any, to younger, younger population so that they can grow into strong, healthy adults with healthy relationships. Thank you.
Any, any further discussion? Call a question?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's a motion, I think we don't need to, and I think discussions are, you wanna call the question, okay. Call the question, so there's, there's, call a question, there's a second. All those in favor of calling the question, say aye. All those opposed say nay. Now we're moving to the amendment, which is to increase the appropriation for Safe Line from seven hundred and fifty dollars to a thousand dollars. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Here's the ayes have it. The ayes have it, so now we've amended, so now we're back to the actual article itself. Is there any more discussion on the article itself? Did you, do you mind? Question, question is, how are they proposed?
The organization sends the town a, uh, a report and a request for money. And so the auditors put this all together, there's your list.
Any further discussion?
Dave? Dave, right now? Okay, I just. All right. Um, for the visiting nurses and hospice of Vermont, New Hampshire, I know it's a really good organization, but it appears to have our own nurse now. And is there any way that, that's redundant or? No, that's a good. I just.
Nancy?
Uh, if we do not have a report, we generally do not fund. So I'm suggesting that we, uh, defund the Vermont Family Network for two hundred and fifty dollars.
So is that an amendment, an amendment proposal? There's an amendment to defund the Vermont Family Network by two hundred and fifty dollars, making it zero, is there a second to that? Uh-huh. Discussion? Hearing no discussion, the amendment is to reduce the, the amount of appropriation to the Vermont Family Network from two hundred and fifty dollars to zero. Again, if you vote aye, you're in support of that, you vote nay, you're opposed to that, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Here's the ayes have it. The ayes have it, and motion carries. Now we're back to the, the main article once again. Any other further discussion? About the matter? We want a second to do the math, if there's no further discussion. What's that? Okay. Okay. So seeing no discussion, the article is shall the town appropriate as amended fifteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty two dollars and fifty cents to support the following social services pursuant to twenty four V S D two sixty nine? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Here's the ayes have it. The ayes have it, and motion carries. Onto article nine, shall the town vote to eliminate the offices of first, first constable, first and second constable? What is your pleasure? So move. Seconded, discussion. Rob?
Would there be any benefit to leaving those positions on bill in case in the future there was somebody who'd be willing to do those jobs? Obviously, you haven't been able to fill it for the last, like, three years. But I, I'm concerned about, uh, couple things, uh. In, in being in town for the last too many years, uh, the constable's job was to oversee elections, to man the polling area. Uh, another responsibility of, of a constable was to, um, uh, I'm using what, what the term is, but when a kid isn't going to school, to check on a truant officer. Yes, and, and so, I don't know that there's anybody that ever checks on, uh, children that are not, that are enrolled in school or not attending the school. So, uh, that would be my biggest concern about taking, removing those positions in case there was somebody that'd be willing to do those jobs in the future.
Any further discussion?
So if Kathy Galuso's still here, is she hiding in the, my understanding, Rob, is the supervisory union now pays a social worker to handle truancy? Um, I don't know if Kathy can confirm that, but if one of your concerns is who's keeping track of truancy, I think the S U does it through a social worker now instead of a law enforcement approach?
If, if there's no objections, Principal Cash is here, and she, maybe she can speak to that?
There are certain words that catch my ears as I'm packing, packing garlic bread, and truancy is, is one. Um, so truancy is handled district by district. I think what you're thinking of, the White River Valley Schools, they do have someone that's a homeschool connection. Here in First Branch, we actually handle our own, I will share that the state of Vermont, um, doesn't push truancy really well. So what we try and build is a comprehensive plan around the students to support them and the family. It's a lot, and, uh, we just, they're, like most states, it's very hard to push truancy. We really focus on trying to find the wellness for the family and the child. I hope that answers your question, but here in First Branch, we handle our own truancy. And down in White River Valley, they, they have somebody who's a homeschool coordinator because they've got a high school and a middle school, I don't know, a middle school from Bethel, and then elementary school right there on site. Does that answer your question? I'm sorry, can we?
Who's, does somebody have their hand up?
Yeah.
Any further discussion, Liz? Any further discussion? Yeah, go ahead, Liz.
So I was spreading misinformation. Rob, the answer is, we don't have anyone as a school district. I was going on knowledge ten years out of date. So that position must have been eliminated at the S U level, because ten years ago, we had a social worker. But now we don't, apparently.
Eve?
So this is just, Eva Verfager, um, as far as things that the constable used to do, um, lost dogs, dog issues, um, just as far as, um, Rob saying, just out of there in case someday we have one again, um, that would then give the ability, if there was going to be someone in charge of dog issues in town, that it would already be a position that they could go into. Dog catcher, yeah. Oh, was that a separate person? So one point, it was the constable. Because there was no dog, okay. Never mind.
Any further discussion? Are you ready for the question? So the question is, shall the town vote to eliminate, eliminate the offices of first and second constable? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. It appears the nays have it. The nays have it, and the motion carries. Moving on to article ten, to elect all town officers as required by law. The first three, the first three are required by ballot for Vermont State law. Select ward for a. Select board for a term of three years, a Lister for a term of three years, auditor for a term of three years, cemetery commission for a term of three years, trustee of public funds for a term of three years, library trustee for a term of three years, library trustee for a term of three years, library trustee for a term of one year, collector of delinquent taxes for a term of one year, first constable for a term of one year, second constable for a term of one year, and town grand juror for a term of one year. Are there any nominations for select board? We have a nomination for Gary Mullen. Are there any other nominations? Seeing no other nominations, I'll have the clerk pass the ballot for Gary Mullen for the position of select board for three years. Moving on to Lister, do you have any nominations? Congratulations. Um, is there anybody, any nominations for Lister? Ellen? Who? Darlene Miller? We have a nomination for Darlene Miller. Is there any other nominations for Lister? Hearing no other nominations, uh, if there's no objection, we'll close nominations. Um, I'll have the clerk pass one ballot for Darlene Miller for the position of Lister for a term of three years. Moving on to auditor for a term of three years. Are there any nominations for auditor? Anissa Morrison. Are there any other nominations for auditor? There are no objections, we'll close nominations. I'll have the clerk pass the ballot for Anissa Morrison for the audit, for the position of auditor for a term of three years. Moving on to cemetery commission, the rest of them are done from the floor. Um, so are there any nominations for cemetery commission? For a term of three years. Oh, I should say, thank you. Um, if you want to see who the different people are, please go to page two. And you can see his term it opens Baxter. That's the guy. I mean, any nominations for cemetery commission? There is a nomination for Baxter Doty. It's a seconded. Any other nominations for cemetery commission for a term of three years? Seeing no nomin- nominations, if there's no objection, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of Baxter Doty as a cemetery for cemetery commission for a term of three years, say aye. All those post say nay. Congratulations Baxter. Moving on, trustee of public funds for a term of three years. Are there any nominations? Yes, the nominee can decline and he did. Any other? Any other, uh, nominees for trustee of public funds for a term of three years? Laura Ginsburg is nominated. It's been seconded. Laura, are you, are you okay with accepting that nomination? Okay. Uh, oh, she seconded herself? Oh, I thought Nancy did. Um, anyways, any other nominations for trustee of public funds? Seeing no other nominations, if there's no objection, we'll close nominations. All those in favor of Laura Ginsburg for a three-year term to trustees of public funds, say aye. All those post say nay. Congratulations. Uh, library trustee for a term of three years. Is there any nominations? Laura Ketchum? Are there any other nominations for library trustee for a term of three years? Cause you can just wait to. Seeing no other nominations, if there's no objection, we'll close nominations. All those in favor of Laura Ketchum for library trustee for a term of three years, say aye. All those post say nay. Congratulations to Laura. Moving on to library trustee for a term of three years. Is there any other nominations? Elin? Leland. Leland Whitehouse? Yep. Are there any other nominations for library trustee for a term of three years? Seeing no other nominations, if there's no objection, we'll close nominations. All those in favor of Leland Whitehouse for, oh, for the term of three years for library trustee, say aye. All those post say nay. Moving on to the winner, library trustee for a term of one year, nominations. I'm seeing a pattern here. Elise Gabriel, any other nominations for the position of library trustee for a term of one year? Seeing no other nominations, if there's no objection, we'll close nominations. All those in favor of Elise Gabriel for a library trustee for a term of one year, say aye. All those post say nay. All right, moving on to collector of delinquent taxes for a term of one year. Do we have any nominations? But Joe Paquin, it's nomination for Joe Paquin. Any other nominations? Seeing no other nominations, if there are no objections, we'll close nominations. All those in favor of Joe Paquin as collector of delinquent taxes for a term of one year, say aye. All those opposed say nay. He's the most disliked man in Tunbridge. Are there any nominations for first constable? No nominations? All right, seeing that there's no nominations, we'll close nominations and move on to second constable. I'm guessing if nobody wanted to be first constable, they didn't want to be second constable. John's threatening people up here. He said that, uh, the, the select board is hesitant, has power to appoint constables if none are elected. I view that as a failed threat. No nominations? Anyways, moving on, uh, nominations for town grand juror for a term of one year. Are there any nominations? Who, Lenora Kimball? Any other nominations? Seeing no other nominations, if there's no objection, we'll close nominations. All those in favor from Lenora Kimball for grand juror for a term of one year, say aye. All those opposed say nay. All right, we're moving on to article eleven. Shall the voters authorize the town treasurer to establish a library capital fund? What is your pleasure? Who moved it? Is there a second? Oh, test. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, are you ready for the question? The question is, shall the voters authorize the town treasurer to establish a library capital fund? All those in favor say aye. All those post say nay. It appears the eyes have it. The eyes have it. Moving on to article twelve. Shall the voters authorize the allocation of surplus fund, funds from the library's previous year's operating budget to the library capital fund? What is your pleasure? Who's, who's that? Who moved it? Joe? Who's the second test? Discussion? Rob? Question is, would there be a proxy amount that we're talking about?
Hi, I'm Anna Decker on Spring Road. Um, Laura, our treasurer had to leave. Um, it's around a hundred thousand dollars right now. Um, and again, that's money that has, um, been surplus in the past years that, um, we want to keep separate from the operating budget so that if there is a big issue with the library, um, it's not pulling away from programming that we're doing.
Any other discussion? Are you ready for the question? The question is, shall the voters authorize the allocation of surplus funds from the library's previous year's operating budget to the library capital fund? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Seems the nays have it, or the eyes have it, sorry. Uh, the motion carries. Moving on to article thirteen, everybody's favorite other business. Now, if there are no objections, I know that there are a couple of things that have been asked to go over, including a legislative report from Mr. Mr. John O'Brien, so there's no objections.
We can kill two birds with one stone here. Um, so once again, I'm John O'Brien. I'm the representative, the House representative for the towns. It's Windsor, Orange One is our district, which are the towns of Tunbridge and Royalton. Um, about four thousand voters in every district in Vermont. We're just reached what's called the town meeting week break, um, about approximately halfway through the session. Um, you probably all heard of something called crossover, which is the point when bills that have been working on in the House have to be voted out and go to the Senate. Cause both bodies have to approve a bill before it can go to the governor. And the Senate bills are about to come to us. That's after this week's over, we have one more week before crossover. So it's been a very weird year because as you all know, um, education and education funding are picking up everybody's time and, and focus. And the governor proposed, uh, the sweeping, um, overhaul of both how education's funded and, and academically how it might roll out. Um, they were very late getting into the Senate and House. And now the general assembly, the House and Senate are going to come up with their versions of this bill too, in a sort of reactive way. So how this is all going to play out, I guess we'll know in May or maybe even later. They've been talking the session going into June or July, just to figure this out. So I would say all we can hope for is that, that somehow property taxes are kept to a minimum, um, and, and the rest of it, the sort of education funding formula, the governance, you've all heard of probably the districts being shrunk to as little as five districts in the whole state. And then academically, the, the governor's plan proposed to pay teachers more, but cut a lot of positions too. So, um, there are a lot of stakeholders that are all going to weigh in, but it's, we don't really know much more than that. It's, you know, keep listening, ask, ask me questions. Come up, sit in on some hearings, but I guess all we can hope for is that we can get through this year with property taxes being, being affordable. And I would say over the next two or three years is when this is all going to be figured out to some extent. So there'll be, there, there will be changes, but I'm sure everything that happens in monthly, it happens really incrementally. So I don't think by May, we're going to have this completely figured out. So I'm in my, I'm, everybody in the House serves on one committee. I'm on the House Committee on Agriculture, Food Resiliency and Forestry. And our piece of the education discussion was on universal school meals, which the governor proposed to cut. And our committee weighed in unanimously in favor of universal school meals. So this is, we have a committee of eight, um, some new members, but some very conservative members, Republicans, one from Derby, who serves on the North Country School Board in favor of universal school meals. Um, another conservative Republican from Cadet Beach in Danville, also in favor of it, and independent from Stowe. And, and the rest, um, the Democrats. So we had tripartisan support for universal school meals. And I don't think it's going to, um, ultimately be cutting the budget, which is a good thing. It's a really good program. Um, and even though its original price of agri scene is something like twenty-eight million dollars, is at the moment, it costs eighteen million dollars, which in a nine billion dollar state budget, that's not that much money for all the good it's been doing. And it also, a lot of Vermont farmers supply food for it. So it's, it's kicking back money into the economy. There's some current use bills in our, in our committee, which are interesting. So you might hear more about those. Any bill that's introduced in this biennium, this year is still in play next year. So I think a lot of bills will be introduced this year, but you, they won't get passed ultimately. But next year there'll be a lot more, um, partly because there's panic, but partly because it just takes two years to pass some bills. And then, um, on legal trails, this is where we can kill two birds with one stone. So I proposed a, a bill to, to sort of essentially end this whole legal trails debate where the towns would have the authority to maintain the trails, um, but not the duty. So you don't have to do anything to the trails, but we do have the power if we want to, to improve them for walkers or bikers or whoever, for recreational use. So the Senate, Allison Clarkson, a senator from Windsor, she took, took exactly my bill and proposed it in the Senate. And in the Senate, it's moving through Senate transportation right now. And I know there were, there was a hearing on it Friday that was canceled, but it was going to be, um, Jonathan Bignall, Laura Ginsburg, and, um, John and Chavaria were all going to testify. So I would say you'll hear more about that as the session goes along. But it would be great to end this whole discussion and stop paying our lawyers. Other ways, um, I proposed about ten bills this year, right? I'm sure none of them will probably get passed this year, but um, including a couple of logging bills, um, so stay tuned on those. But that's about it. You know, come up to Montpelier sometime, you know, spend a day at the State House or get in touch with me if you have any issues. Um, it's a, it's sort of a think, think out two years here and, and that's our window to get stuff done. Thank you.
Any, any questions?
I'd love to propose that, uh, write a, a, a bill that addresses town meeting in Vermont and make, make this a state holiday. And, uh, people use the excuse. People use the excuse if they can't go to town meeting because they gotta go, go to work. Now, I know that the, if there was a state holiday, there would still be a lot of employers that'll expect you to be working. But, um, Izzy brought this up at the opening of the meeting is that we're the only one of the few towns that actually has in, in-person voting on budgets and electing officials. If we go to an Australian ballot, like all of our neighbors have done, you get nobody to turn out. Nobody comes to the, the pre-town meeting anymore here anyway. Uh, so if you want to know what's going on, you got to hear the conversation, the discussion and, and the debate. So, um, I would, I would love to have that happen and, um, Matt Jesus does it for Patriots Day, isn't that right? Uh, so they get away with it, why can't we?
Any other questions for John? So go talk about the.
Well, we mentioned earlier, uh, the Aqua money and which turned into just, you know, surplus money and then the Merp grant for fixing the town hall. I mean, to, um, basically weatherize and do some other improvements to the town hall and town offices and, and, uh, just that's something we had on our radar anyway. And then we got these grants, so it's actually going to work out quite well. It won't cost the taxpayers tax money to, to get these buildings weatherized so we don't dump quite so much fuel through the furnaces every year to keep the buildings warm and, and they'll actually be better in the summertime too. So, uh, we have that planned and we're going to carry on with that and have it hopefully done by two thousand twenty-six.
Any other, other business for the Goodview Order, Tom?
Thank you, Thornton. Thank you, Gary. I'm just going to peg leg off of what Gary was saying with some details about the Merp grant. It's kind of a weird word. Merp. M E R P stands for Municipal Energy Resilience Program. Someone who's not here today, very important. In fact, some of our neighboring towns are trying to poach Mary Ann Karen away. I think we should give a round of applause to Mary Ann Karen, our grants administrator. Very important work. Uh, so the Merp grant was really a, a unique collaboration. Um, I learned about it from a memo that came from what the group that we call T-ROR, Two Rivers, Adakwechi Regional Planning Commission. And realized they were tweaking the rules a little bit to allow another week and maybe open that grant possibility a little bit more flexibly. And I was in touch with the law school about this and also with Mary Ann. And between a guy named Kurt Malin, who's a professor at the law school, and two of his students, Urban Yar and Sherid Gentry. And Mary Ann, we put the grant together in record time, got it in and did receive a grant in the total amount of two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars and four, eleven, uh, and twenty cents. And Mary Ann, we put the grant together in record time, got it in, and did receive a grant in the total amount of two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in four, four eleven, uh, and twenty cents. Uh, seventy-one thousand is going to the town offices for the upgrades that Gary talked about, a lot of the rest of the money is going to the town hall. And then, of course, there's going to be in addition to the solar plant, uh, ten kilowatts added to the three, three kilowatts that we have. When all of that is done and the weatherization is done in the two buildings. Chances are, that electricity from the solar will cover all of the electricity costs of those two buildings. And there is a future opportunity to grow it out to thirty kilowatts, three times the size, so that's just a little bit of background, I'm holding Green Energy Times, if you want to know more about renewable energy and things you can do. To, uh, uh, reduce ton bridges and your own carbon footprint, pick up a copy on the way out, and that's it, thank you.
Joe? Yes, you can, it takes privilege, and we've kind of gone through other business, so there has been a movement to adjourn, which is a privileged motion, is there a second to moving to adjourn? It's been seconded, all those in favor of adjournings say aye. All those opposed say nay. We're adjourned, thank you very much.